...to see if she's on her way. Usually she's running time, so we're going to check to see what's happened there. So we'll go ahead. Opening exercises by Da 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 Da.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda, its adoption of the agenda.
Move, move approval?
The participation in the compliance of all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Citizens vote, we get the hearts from citizens and what they speak for. Any citizens comments? Next, as Educational Services, Mr. Heber.
Good morning. The first item on the agenda is to approve the statewide voluntary pre-K provider contract that we have at the early learning college.
Any comments, any questions?
Move approval of the statewide voluntary pre-K provider.
Second. And move by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Bryant, to approve the state-wide voluntary pre-kindergarten provider. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Yes, five zero.
Four zero.
Oops, sorry, thank you.
And next, I request approve the addendum to the cooperative agreement with the extension of termination date between the school board of Citrus County and Eckerd Youth Alternatives. This is Camden and Ross.
I would like to officially approve the addendum to the cooperative agreement with Eckerd Youth Alternatives.
It's been moved by Mr. Dawes, second by Mr. Bryant, to approve the addendum to the cooperative agreements with Eckerd Youth Alternatives and corporate, incorporated in the W W N I C. Holland Fager?
I had a discussion.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I did spit that out.
Okay, other question, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, real short, simple extension of the contract, but I just was curious with the first contract, if there were any issues or concerns at all with the program?
No, I spoke to Mr. Phillipson from Eckerd the other day recently about it. He's very comfortable with the contract and how it's been working. Feels like he's getting the services they need for the students at the school and feels very comfortable with the contract as it's moving forward. So it's been a good partnership with them. We haven't had any issues from our end and they haven't had any from their end, so.
And who's our contact, who is the school district's contact person with them as far as, I don't want to say receiving the contract, but as far as that contact?
Ms. Humboldt is our contact with them, although we have a variety of departments. Mrs. Kirby's department meets with them, Ms. Stanley meets with them as well and goes down on a regular basis and Ms. Humboldt as well. So, but Ms. Humboldt's more the direct contact with them specifically.
Okay, thank you very much.
I used to be on the board of the W N I C. It was a very enjoyable experience and you'd go out and definitely have a fun laser, just have an open house and talk to the girls there and talk to the teachers and they had it together. They were really, really good, so. Okay, ready for both? Holland Fager?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, four zero.
Do, Mr. Heber, do we have, or Ms. Humboldt, do we have a SAC or are we required to have a SAC with them now? Yeah, I wasn't sure, because I know there's, they're kind of, they're a little unique.
They do do a school improvement plan, but they are not required to have those.
Okay. Just because if we did, we wanted to support that as a board member, we wanted to, so. Okay, thank you.
Did you have someone, Ms. Humboldt, that you wanted to say?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Bishop with the support services.
Yes, ma'am, good morning. I request the board's approval of the instructional support recommendations as outlined on the Goldenrod.
Second. And Zupa, I'm trying, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the instructional and support recommendations that we have on the Goldenrod. Any discussions? Ready for both? Holland Fager?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Here is four zero.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is swearing in of the school safety guardians.
Good morning. I would like to just take a second to introduce our two newest guardians to the board. John, goes by Charlie Cunningham, is working at Chris River High School at this time. Charlie comes to us with a great deal of experience. He worked for the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office, starting in 1998, 2004, and then moved over to the Danbury Police Department in 2004 to 2019. So he's got 21 years in law enforcement. He's married, has several kids, two of which are in our district, one at LPS and one at La Canto Middle. So he's very excited about coming down and working for our district. I know I talked to his police chief who said, "We were absolutely getting the best officer that he's ever worked with." And this police chief is from area of Citrus County, raved about the county. I spoke to him at length. He keeps up with what's going on in the county. So it was very interesting to talk to him, but I know we're very excited about having Charlie on board. He's a great personality, really well-intentioned. And his wife's retired now, but she had 15 years in law enforcement, so, you know, when he gets stumped, he goes and asks the boss what to do, so. Rude Rivera, he is taking over Chris River Middle School. He's, he has Chris River Pride going on there. Rude comes to us from Puerto Rico. He has his bachelor's degree in social work and psychology from the University of Puerto Rico, where he worked as a social worker for eight years. He was in the active army from 2011 to 2013, and then he's been a member of our National Guard since 2013. He's a staff sergeant in the guard, currently is in our artillery unit. He's worked in private security and for youth and family alternatives, working with troubled teens. So I think with his background, working with kids and social work, and with a security and military background, he's just a huge asset for us. He's also married and has three children here in our county, so. Both of these guys, I think, just add to that wealth of experience we have out there with our guardian program as a whole. They went through the program of flying colors, had, did the additional 200-plus hours of training after the mandated, you know, training from the sheriff's office. So very well-trained, very skilled, come with diverse backgrounds that are going to be beneficial to our school environment as a whole, so we're just very happy to have both of them. If you guys will come up? Lindsay, where's the best for you?
How about one on this side?
What they said?
And then basement, that would be good.
There you go.
Hey, Rachel, yeah? Aye, state your name.
I am.
Do Solomon swear that I will support, protect, and defend?
Do Solomon swear that I will support, protect, and defend?
The Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida?
Under the fiction of the United States and of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold a position?
Duly qualified to hold a position?
Under the laws of the state?
Under the laws of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform?
That I will well and faithfully perform?
The duties of school safety guardian?
The duties of school safety guardian.
On which I am now about to enter?
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Can I say just a couple of words? May I say a couple of words?
Absolutely.
I'm amazed at the fact that I'm a diversity background, so many things you've done, and you've come here with children who are in the school system, so you can see it from that perspective, not just a guardian perspective, that you see it from a parent's perspective and a citizen's perspective. And that really gives, at least gives me a lot of confidence that you are able to analyze a whole situation from all these different perspectives and go with it and nobody's right on top of it. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, and we're going to go ahead and let them get back to their schools.
And, John, you got the insurance, Mr.?
Yeah, good morning, once again. Before I turn it over to Mr. Ballmer, I just want to lift out where we've been and where we're heading in terms of self-insurance. We are blessed here in Sootes County to be self-insured. There's a lot of benefits to come to that, and a lot of responsibilities as well in terms of managing the insurance, self-insurance fund, managing the, working with our broker for the management of our wellness centers. As the board knows, we've transitioned back late May, early June, we transitioned to My Health On Site. We've had a great relationship with Care Here, but we migrated or transitioned to My Health On Site. That transition has gone extremely well. We are looking forward to the opportunity to expand our services and our offerings to our membership at My Health On Site. As Mr. Ballmer goes through and shares with the group this morning, the state of our health insurance and our recommendation in terms of our premium increase, really want to lift out a couple of things. We know that a large percentage of our monthly claims is directly attributed to our pharmaceutical costs, okay? So that is one of the charges I've bestowed upon Mr. Ballmer, is to work with My Health On Site to expand our offerings in our wellness center in terms of pharmaceuticals. We know that we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars a month on pharmaceuticals, and I just believe that's a fertile area for us to pursue to reduce our claims data. As Mr. Ballmer goes through the presentation this morning, he will share with you the first six, six months of the, six, seven months of the year in terms of claims data. You'll notice that as we get into June and July, those claims numbers are up and they are over budget. I think there's a lot of mitigating, or factors that contribute, contributing factors to that. I believe first and foremost, you know, these uncertain times, I think people are much more tuned to go address the issues that they may have or may think they have, and I think that's reflective in our numbers. The way we do our projections is we look at the first, at least, six months of claims. We look at last year's data from the second half of the calendar year, and we do the best we can to project expenditures. While it's not an exact science, we, our track record has proven to be very effective in our projections. I think at the end of the presentation, Mr. Ballmer's going to share with the board our recommendation for premium increases, and I hope that the board and our, and our membership shares some of my excitement about the information we're going to share today. I believe it's unprecedented. I believe in a marketplace where the average increase is over 10%, it's about 10.8%, I think the numbers you'll see today are going to be well short of that, and hopefully our membership will appreciate it as well. Having said that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ballmer to share the information, and we'll answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good morning. Glad to be here today. Glad to present this information to you. As Mr. Bishop said, we're very excited about this. He took this information to our health insurance committee last week, and we want to bring this proposal to you. We'll bring the, for a vote on September 8th, we're ready. So, just to begin with, as Mr. Bishop talked about, we have our transition that we made to My Health On Site for our wellness centers from Care Here. We still have the same staff that we have in Care Here at both of our wellness centers. That has not changed, and we have a different management team that's there running it. Instead, one of the things we're looking to do is we will be expanding our formulary beyond just what's offered at the wellness center. We want to expand more than that. We're expanding other services. We have tele-visits, we're starting virtual visits, where we have staff members who cannot get from their school to the wellness center during the middle of the day, but they do have a lunch break, they can do a virtual visit with the doctor via their phone or a tablet, and they can, if the doctor says, "Oh, you need to pick up a prescription," they can come by the center after hours, after work hours, and pick it up. So we have more utilization that can happen during the day, more flexibility for our staff members. As far as the numbers go, in July, we had 1,128 appointments. Beverly Hills saw the line share of that with 780 appointments. Eminence saw 348 of those appointments. So these numbers are right on par with what we have with Care Here was our provider. So even despite the limited access that people had at the beginning of June of COVID-19, as we moved into July, we saw the utilization pick back up at the wellness center. Medications, we dispensed almost 1,200 medications through the wellness center, okay? 709 of those were done on-site, and 479 were done through mail order. And again, that's right on par with what we have with Care Here. We're looking to expand the mail order even more this year to try to reduce the number of visits they're taking up at the center and provide more flexibility for our membership. Okay? All right. Question?
Do we know the number of utilization of people who have gone online or registered and using the password with My Health On Site, which is the number that are in, that are eligible for that service?
No.
Okay, is that, is there a way we can find?
Well, I could ask My Health On Site, I could ask Crown at My Health On Site to find out, this is how many members we have, how many are registered. I can find that out, but I don't have that, that's not the information that we ask for on a regular basis.
Right. I'm just kind of curious how many people we have that are in, that are eligible for this that aren't using the wellness center.
I could find that.
What?
Oh, I can tell you this, though. Information was sent out in June, and we've received a lot of calls and questions in the past three weeks as teachers and staff came back to school, because a lot of them have not checked their email whenever the information was sent out. So we've been seeing a lot more of those people sign up recently, but I can definitely ask them at My Health On Site, ask them, "How many registered members do we have?"
Question?
All right. Our claims, as you can see, are breakdown of claims through the years. On the far right, you'll see the total claims so far this year. As Mr. Bishop alluded to, the first five months, four months of claims were doing pretty well. The three months after that just happened to coincide with the exact same time that we started seeing a lot more claims related to illnesses that might be related to COVID-19. We don't know the exact diagnosis of all those. But that trend is still manageable, as you can see. If you look at June and July for the past couple of years, you would see an increase in the number of claims about that time of year as well. So this is not unprecedented, and it's not something that we are not prepared for. What we do is we take those first six months of claims, we project out what would be the national trends and state trend are between 10.8 and 11.5%. We'll project out for the next six months, what would our trend have to be in order for us to meet our budget? So we are conservative on our estimates, we do not want to under-budget, and you'll see in our process here exactly what that results in. Okay? So our renewal process is, as Mr. Bishop alluded to, we have a historical analysis that we go through, what has happened in the past, the last six months of the year, to give us an idea of what could possibly occur in the future. We met with Crown, our insurance broker, Crown represents quite a few organizations, public entities throughout the state, so they have a very good hand on what the insurance trend is for public entities, the school districts, okay? We brought the proposal to the executive staff. A little more about the proposal, okay? As I said, we reviewed those first six months of claims to help us determine what the last six months might look like. Myself, Mr. Bishop, and Brian Brannan from Crown, we met, and what we do when we meet is we forecast those claims for the remainder of the year. We take that trend, we extrapolate it out. The state trend's about 10.8%. We look ours to be upwards of about 12. Why is that? To be conservative. We'd rather say it's going to cost us more as we're planning for the future. We'd rather not come up short on that. So we take ours and make it a little bit higher, and compare ours with the state national average, take it up just a hair, so that way we are not under-budgeting things. And with that proposal, we believe that we can raise our rates a half of 1% and still meet the needs of our membership. This is exactly what we had last year, and I believe that we had a very positive reception with that from our membership. We had several counties call and ask us what we did to our plan to change it so we could have a minimal rate increase, and the answer was, "Nothing. We managed the plan." We spoke to our membership, explained the benefits of a wellness center, what they could do to help keep those costs down, and our membership has done that. It took a few years to get there, but I believe that we are there, we just need to stay the course and do that. So we are proposing a half percent increase now. What would that look like for our employees? I believe that's, that's the main factor here. So Plan 3359, this is our high-end plan. If you look to the far right, you can see the increase per paycheck for an employee with a half percent. So 3359 single, we'll see an increase of $2.26. Employee plus one, $4.73. In the family plan, it'll be $4.94. Now, this is without any increase to the negotiated board match. Last year, we had a board match of $10 a month, $5 a check. So if that was, if there was to be a board match similar to that this year, $5 per check increase, everybody on the high plan would pay less money for health insurance than they're paying now. And you're seeing a state average of 10.8%, and our membership is paying less out-of-pocket than they were the year before. That's an astounding thing. You don't see that very often. Now, our plan that most of our employees are on, you're talking 84 to 85% of our employees are on Plan 516869. The vast majority of our employees, 83%, are on 5168. They would see an increase of $1.74. 5169 single, plus one, $3.76. In the family plan, which is almost all of our family coverage is on this plan, we'll see an increase of $3.92. Now, again, if there's an additional board match, that would come down. Okay? If it's a $10 board match, if it were to be $5 per check, everybody on this plan would be paying less money for health insurance this year than they were last year. No change in the plans, no change in deductibles, no change in out-of pockets, no change in providers. Everybody would be paying less if we saw a similar board match. Now, Plan 5172, what we call the ACA plans, it's a portable character still around, we still must offer a plan that meets the affordability standards. We have no one on 5173, single plus one or family. But on 5172, there'd be no additional cost to the employee, but the employee would still pay $50 per check regardless of what increase in the board match would be. They would still have no access to the wellness center. As we spoke before, the amount of money that revenue that's bringing in, we spend more money in program fees to the wellness center than we actually receive from revenue on that point. So again, they would see no change in their costs, even if there is an additional board match increase, they would still pay the $50 per check. So that being said, if there were a board match increase, we'd be looking at none of our employees paying more than they were for health insurance last year, and a vast majority of our employees paying less for health insurance than they were in previous years.
Mr. Ballmer?
Yes?
The 5172 plan, about how many people do we have on that plan?
5172, I-
Just roughly, I was just confused.
Eighty-five, maybe, maybe less.
And how does that compare generally to the 5168 plan?
5168, you're looking at a deductible on this one of about $6,500 versus 5168 of about $1,500 deductible.
Okay.
So, and that's your maximum out-of-pocket on this. Where on 5168, your maximum out-of-pocket is going to be, you know, $3,000. So you're, you're going to be paying everything upfront on this plan to save $23 a check.
And, and you wouldn't have, and with the other one, you have the access to the wellness-
The access to the wellness center.
I'm not surprised we even have 85.
Uh, yes. We do, from time to time, have people that will sign up for 5173, single or family, and we'll give them a call and let them know that you've signed up for a plan that has higher deductibles, higher out-of-pocket, no access to wellness. It's usually go back. So whenever we do those come in, we let them know, "Is this really what you wanted?" Then everyone we've spoken to has come back and changed their mind.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Now, our next steps, we took it to the health insurance committee, got their input on it. We'll bring it to the school board today for, want to take a look at it. September 8th, we're going to come, ask you all to approve it. And beginning September 9th, we're going to begin our virtual presentations. That'll be new, what we like to call the roadshow, won't be happening this year. It's a little different for me. I like to be in front of people talking, doing this via Zoom's going to be different. But we're going to make sure everybody gets the information, everything explained, not just the health insurance, but all the reasons for their benefits as well. October 12th, I'm sorry? You want to be, be out there when you're bringing good news, don't you? Yeah, I've been out there another time, so yeah. Definitely go out there whenever the news is good, that's for sure. October 12th, we begin our open enrollment. On October 12th through the 23rd, CBT representatives will be available. They will not be available at the school sites because we aren't having people at the school sites. So we do have other opportunities where they have a phone bank that's available, the same people that you'd be meeting with at the sites will be there, the phone banks. They also have virtual meetings that you can set up, and you can actually get on your computer and speak to the person, see them on there, and they can help you go through the enrollment process. They've done this several times out in Texas with a lot of their districts, where they got pretty good at it. So it's going to be the same level of service that we have from CBT now, we're going to continue to have, it's just going to be done in a different format due to the circumstances that we're in right now. And then October 30th, open enrollment will end. Part of the reason why open enrollment has to end at that point is because if we don't get the information loaded into the system properly before Thanksgiving, we start running into those multiple paychecks in December, and we do not want health insurance premiums to be incorrect whenever we have an opportunity, again this year, for people to have such a minimal increase and possibly a decrease in the amount that they're paying out of pocket. Any questions from the board on, on the proposal?
I've got a question. The self-insurance, our, our fund balance?
Yes, sir.
That would be pretty healthy. I mean, it's, I mean, it's about over $6 million now?
I believe so.
And so my question is going to be, what would the cost to the district be if we didn't pass on any increase, and we're only dealing with a half of a percent increase, which is relatively, I mean, very low? What would be the cost to the district? I know you probably look at that, or Crown has to-
Well, to, to the district, you're already talking about to the fund?
The fund.
This employee funded. It depends. If we have, all it takes is a few catastrophic claims to come in, and we could be in pretty significant issues there. We had, you know, a few years ago, we had one claimant that was, claims were well over $2.5 million for the year, which led, you know, we had reinsurance, that took quite a steep increase in our reinsurance costs because we had pretty big claims. So if we have a few claimants that fall into that category, we don't know, we really don't know, I know, but to the fund balance, it depends. I mean, I don't, we don't know what the cost of anything associated with COVID-19.
Well, yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm talking about on the forecasted, on the increases. What if we didn't pass on any increase, is what I'm saying.
We would not be, we wouldn't, our forecast, we would not be able to meet the needs, we would not be able to meet our budget needs for what we believe our cost would be for next year.
What's the, what's the recommended fund balance by, by Crown? What do they want us to have in the fund balance?
The insurance regulation, actually, it says you have to have equal to two and a half months of your claim.
So where are we on that?
You see they're trending up, you know, as, as the average, I don't have it on top of my head, I know we budget for about a million dollars a month. July's with, I think, 1.258 million, I believe it was, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
So with an upward trend in claims and to not get any increase, and we know the cost of services are increasing, cost of pharmaceuticals are increasing, and there's a big unknown out there as far as the long-term effects of COVID-19, I think we are subjecting ourselves to a degree of risk that I would really encourage the board to consider before we go down that road of not getting any additional revenue. We anticipate our costs rolling up, but if we don't get that half percent, we're going to, we're going to operate in a much greater deficit in the upcoming year. Last year, we were a half percent, this year we're at a half a percent. Couple of years back, my first year on the job, when I came into this role, that fund was very unhealthy. We went up, we had to go up for a 22% increase. That was, that was my business at the school. Very positive. I would caution the board very strongly before we, before we do not consider the minimal increase in revenue, because we know undoubtedly our costs are going to increase. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, we can do what we can through the wellness center, try to mitigate that, but there are some items, some of our high claims, there's nothing the wellness center can do whenever we have high claims, heart attacks, or people who develop different types of cancer. There's nothing, wellness center can only do so much when it comes to that, so the claims can't be mitigated through the wellness center on those. So we do have claims that will continue to increase, which is why we're asking for a, a small increase.
Yeah, and again, I'm just asking the questions. I mean, I, you know, I think it's a, it's a good question asked, and we almost doubled our fund balance in self-insurance fund last year. So we're, we're building the, the self-insurance fund up very healthy. It's a good thing. But there comes a point when, I mean, if we're running, you know, four or five times the amount- But there comes a point when, I mean, if we're running, you know, four or five times the amount that we need to have, then we could offset that by, by holding our premium steady.
Well, also last year, we had an increase in membership. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we did have an increase in membership, and I believe that was due to the fact that our rates did not increase out of pocket for members, people who were not on our plan came on our plan. Um, so along with that, with that increase in membership, was an increase in revenue. Now, along with that increase in membership, is also an increase in claims, uh, liability in the future. So that has to be offset as well. So, uh, just, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, and I mean, and hey, this is, this is a good report. I mean, you got good information here, right? You know, I'm just asking the basic question, you know, you know, what, what could, what are the figures? What, would that hit our insurance, our self-insurance fund for if we were to stay within, uh?
I, I don't have that right here with me. I can get that. I, I wouldn't be too hard to get. I still have it.
But you're saying, based on May, June, and July's increase in claims? And the forecast, you're saying that going forward, is Crown, is Crown saying that we're gonna continue to see a, a rise in the, in the claims? Is that what they're telling us?
Oh, we're gonna, there's gonna be a rise, a continued rise in the cost of services. And we, like, that's the reason why we try to get our membership used at the wellness center. We try to get it, as Mr. Bishop brought up, almost twenty two percent of our claims each month is pharmaceutical. That's why we're trying to get our membership used at the wellness center as much as possible for the pharmaceuticals. That's the reason why we're trying to expand the pharmacy there to try to keep those amounts down. That, that is the biggest, that is the one thing I think we can really, really as a group work on together.
Right.
So that's, and that's the part that, that is the great unknown every single month as to what pharmaceutical costs are gonna be.
Sure. And that's why the benefit too is making sure if you're on the plan, get your username and password so that you can do that.
If, if, if any other, any doubt in that, you just call the eight 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 number, they can set you up with an appointment right there. Yes, sir.
Mr. Bommer, I remember a few years back, we had a person on our staff that used a disproportionate amount of our money. I don't think that person is on our insurance anymore, or whatever it was got repaired. But there's no telling when we'll get another one.
That's correct.
Just like that one. It, it just hurt our hearts to have to send it out every month, every month. And that, that person is either no longer or is well. So that's a good thing.
But yeah, we, uh, every month, I, I've told Mr. Bishop this, I get a high claims alert whenever high claims come in, and I get the notification as to what the medication is. And every now and then, the medication, that report just stops coming in for that medication. I don't know if the person got better or if the person retired or moved on, or if something else has happened. So it's always that in-between of, you know, you're, you're hoping for the best, but you notice that that twenty two thousand dollar claim is not in there anymore. And whenever it came in, usually on the fifteenth or whatever day of the month it was. So yes, we do have those still coming each month, and whenever they stop coming in, it makes me wonder as to who it was, and hopefully they're doing okay.
And we never know, we might, might get another one.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
I want to ask you about pharmaceuticals.
Yes, ma'am.
If a person is prescribed by a doctor, not the wellness center, but a doctor, um, to take certain medication every month, you know, months on end, um, can the wellness center order that medication or have that medication on hand for that person to pick up? Or does the person have to go, have to go to the wellness center to get reexamined and affirm that that's what they're supposed to do?
Well, what happens is the first time, they will have to go in there because the providers at the wellness center are the ones who are actually dispensing the medication. They are pharmacy, they're, they're dispensary. So they will go in, they'll say, yep, you need to take this, I'm gonna say cholesterol medication, this cholesterol medication. And if they're taking it for months and months at a time, they'll ask them, you wanna be on mail order? So you come in here every six months to, to, to get a refill instead of every month. So that's saving them time, opening up appointments for everyone else, it's convenience. So yes, ma'am, those happen all the time where outside providers write a script, they take it to the wellness center, they evaluate it and say, yep, here's your medication, and they don't pay anything out of pocket for that.
And how many months at a time can, can they get medication for? Like at the pharmacy, you can get, uh, three months at a time, how?
It depends on if it's something that's new, if they've just started it, say cholesterol or heart, uh, blood pressure. They like to monitor them and make sure they're at the right level. But once they're at a maintenance level, they can do, uh, give them three months there. They wanna be on mail order, then a couple of weeks later, they'll get another three months supply on the mail. So they'll come once every six months to the wellness center to get a refill.
And Ms. Powers, I've, I've had the opportunity of using that, and I was pleased at how seamless it was. Um, I could go in right with my doctor's prescription, and it was really one visit, and they set me up. And there was, you know, it was very, very smooth. And, uh, and I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the wellness center staff doing that. The way they, they handle it has been seamless, and I'm, I'm grateful to it.
And with our tele-visits we have now, we have people that can do their med rebuilds via phone. They talk about, no, I've had no complications, and then they just come by and pick it up at the counter, almost like going through Walgreens.
So they don't have to have to be in the same-
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. If they're an established patient, and if they're no issues. If they're having issues, that's a different story, but a lot, we have a lot of people doing tele-visits for those right now.
Well, is the hope that that would continue even maybe after the COVID situation?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I tell you, that, that's really been a great positive.
This, this is, this is not a flash in the pan for us. This is gonna continue on, the tele-visits, the virtual visits, that's, that's what we're gonna do moving forward. So we can utilize those appointments in the middle of the day, whenever staff members can't get to the center. Now they can get help from a provider, if they need medication, they can go by, uh, on their way home and just pick it up and don't have to have an appointment after hours.
That sounds to be at both places.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, both places.
And there's no charge for that tele-visit?
Nope. There's, well, with the wellness center, we have no way of collecting, uh, any money from anybody. They don't even have a way of doing that, so it's all just part of the package. Whenever they have our health insurance, as long as they're not on fifty one, seventy two, they have our health insurance if they're dependent, they have that service.
So, uh, you know, I've kept my health insurance at the sheriff's office. I don't, uh, participate in school board's health insurance, but we're with My Health Onsite too. But, you know, there's a forty nine dollar fee for that tele-visit for me, so I'm gonna, I'll, I'll have to ask that question.
No, not for us.
Yeah.
Not for us.
Yes.
No, although, I mentioned that, obviously. No, we have no way of doing that. We have no intention. We want our, we wanna utilize the wellness center as much as possible, and this is, these are just more steps that we have for utilization to increase. Any other questions?
We just, we just, uh, want to do everything we can to be sure that our staff, our teachers are as well as they possibly can be in the wellness center's own way.
Oh, yes, ma'am, absolutely. And we, uh, and I think we got a lot of people utilizing that the best we can. We'll be out again this year, uh, doing the flu shots like we have in the past. Uh, I think we'll have a big uptick in the number of people participating in that this year. As soon as we get those dates finalized, we'll get it out to all of our staff so everybody knows locations, dates, and times.
And speaking of shots, what shots are given by the wellness center?
Oh, I can't speak to that exactly. Uh, I can, I can find out from, uh, our, uh, contact over there, and I can get that to you.
It'd be interesting. Is there something, or like required or suggested?
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully we can give those.
I can find out if there was available there.
Thank you.
And I, I will say this though too. I mean, I think kudos to staff for, you know, continuing with the cooperative bring up the sheriff's office to keep, uh, you know, this two, two available locations. I mean, I know we've talked about maybe one day having a third location, you know, but, um, I'm glad to see the partnership continue, you know, with my, and now moving to My Health Onsite, with the fact the sheriff's office is staying, um, with, uh, the school district and, you know, partnering with us in that, um, opportunity, I think that's a good, good move.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Number to call, would you need to call the wellness center, and where's the, uh, site on the computer?
Uh, it's myhealthonsite.com. And the phone number, it's on the sticky note on my computer. So I don't have it right off the top of my head, there's so much stuff that you could, oh, yeah, I can, I can get it to you, Ms. Powers.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, ma'am, I'll get it to you before this afternoon.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is very, very positive. Sometimes things have been presented about, like, uh-
Every now and then, I get to do something good, so that's, I'll say it again. All right, I appreciate it, folks.
Thank you.
Ms. Powers, I'll get that to you this afternoon.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next we have a number of student purchases.
Good morning. I come before you to request permission to purchase Zoom for our teachers and our administrators, and it would be, uh, the yearly license. As you know, Zoom was used extensively during distance learning and all through the summer as we've met virtually. Zoom had for a temporary amount of time lifted the time requirement for their free account for educators. So it typically is a forty minute time limit, and they lifted that temporarily. So we, we feel strongly that we will need to use it at times for longer than forty minutes. And so we have, um, worked with the company to get a quote to purchase the paid version for our teachers and administrators. Um, some other benefits is it will allow up to three hundred participants at a time. And so for some of our virtual courses, that will be needed, that may be needed, uh, also for meetings. Um, another factor that it will allow that I think is very important for our students and parents is this version will allow parents who have a weak signal at home to actually dial in and participate in the Zoom meeting or call. And so, as you know, some of our areas, the, having a strong signal is, is a challenge. So I think that, that would be beneficial. Uh, so it's twenty five dollars per user for the year is our quote, which is actually pretty good. That's normally a hundred and ninety nine dollars per person per year in the corporate world. So just seek your approval. Do you have any questions about Zoom?
Move approval on the Zoom purchase?
Second.
And move, and it should give you second, uh, Mr. Goddard for approval on the Zoom package, uh, discussion?
Yes, I've got a question. Uh, one of the things that, that's a little irritating to me is when I'm on a Zoom call or I'm, and, and people have their faces blacked out. Okay, and I've noticed that my son, last year when we did the remote learning, I, you know, wanted to see his class, and even the teacher, uh, one of the guys, everybody was blacked out. Um, so I, you know, I told him, hey, why, you know, why are you, well, all, all the kids do it, we're allowed to do it. My question is, is it the purpose of a Zoom meeting, be able to have a little face-to-face interaction? And be able, I mean, so my question, I guess, is, is there a standard we can put in place for teachers, uh, you know, that to require or, um, you know, at least for the, the teacher to be required? But could teachers require students to be, to have their face shown on the Zoom meeting? That, that not blackout their, their, um, their picture?
I think that's definitely something we can discuss at our next ed services meeting and, and maybe come up with some guidelines, recommendations for teachers to use with their students. I know personally, when I meet with the group that I meet with, I ask to see their face because it's, I want it to be participatory. Uh, I, I do know that in reading chats, that some parents or some teachers, um, at times will mute them, the, the camera, just so that everybody can focus on the content that they're sharing on the screen and not be distracted by, you know, what's happening.
Right.
But we definitely can, we can work on some further recommendations.
So it also, it also came up as a bargaining issue. So if it's important to you, then why not take it for a bargain? So it came up as a bargaining issue when we, when we did it this way. So we can certainly do that, if it's important to do that, we'd be taking it for a bargain. They did bring it up in, in the spring of the year.
Ultimately, it's a class, it's a classroom management issue for the teacher, you know, what, when they set their expectations for their, their classroom.
Okay. My question was, Doug, are they live picture you're asking about, or is it any picture up there?
Well, I, I'm saying that you should see your, the participants, you know, who's-
Live?
Yeah, who's, you know, they have their camera on, and, and, you know, it's amazing. Again, I, I want, you know, I was, I did this several different times, in different classes. Or rarely were students' faces being shown on the Zoom meetings. And I, I feel like, you know, I want, as a parent, I want my son to be in the Zoom meeting live as a person, not with his camera blacked out, running around over here doing this or that and hardly paying attention. So I, you know, that's just what I'm saying. I, I think if we look at our attendance, you know, if we do have to go to a online learning module or if we do have students who are being quarantined and are having to do everything online, if there's a Zoom meeting, I, I just, I think that's not too much to ask, that we expect that if they're gonna be in school via Zoom, that they are visiting.
Okay. I definitely explore that.
But there's, well, there's a couple of things. First of all, the Zoom technology is to allow the moderator, the teacher, to provide information in an interactive format. So that allows them to be able to put, as you, you've talked about on the screen, share your screen, share that information, share that presentation.
Right.
One of the challenges is when you have cameras on, is that if, I can, and I can tell you specifically on, on a, uh, on a more tablet device, it is challenging when those cameras are on because you have difficulty being able to navigate through the information that's being presented. Because you can't see the presenting. You either can't, you either get dominated by the individuals or you don't get to see always the presentation in its clear format. Which is why I believe teachers and presenters will sometimes shut off the cameras.
Oh, and I don't have a problem with the teachers shutting off the cameras.
Okay, so, so that was my only thing of, with it is, is that, that, that part of it is, is to be part of that control I would want to, you know, still keep of that discretion of the instructor because of that.
Yeah.
So that, that was my only piece of, of the, the importance of it. I, I will say, I think that Zoom itself, the technology, is becoming such an essential part, an essential tool in business, let alone in education, it's even to the next level. One of the, the benefits, uh, having been on some, some national Zooms is that, you know, they can ask questions and have a person give a response to it. And you can give a quiz live while that session is going on and actually have instant feedback. And it's being all done remotely. One of the things though with the dial-up, which I think is a great option to be able to have, um, other products like GoToMe, which are much more expensive, have those options. But there would not be a live picture. The person, when they dial in, it, it's, it's not gonna have that. So in those students' situation, there wouldn't be an availability for that, that student's picture to be up there.
At that time, it would only be auditory.
So I, I just thought we should be aware of that.
Let me ask a question. Sometimes when you're going to a Zoom meeting and you click on to go there, and you get a message back saying that we need to download another form of Zoom.
Mm-hmm, that is correct. So in the spring, when Zoom was learning, along with the rest of us, what this new world looks like, they started to find ways that they can improve the security features in their software. And so they began making it mandatory. If it's something that they feel is an, an important feature, um, they make it mandatory to update before you can actually go in and, and use the product. So that's just Zoom trying to improve the environment and this, and the safety features to limit, um, unwanted visitors from coming into the Zoom.
So that's happened all the time, and you go to a Zoom meeting, you might, you might get the message to download a, a different form?
Yes, you may. So we will need to add that to our pointers to remind even our students and our parents to check your Zoom a few minutes before your meetings so that, you know, you can take care of the software upgrades.
What happens is you, you do that, but you can't get into the meeting yet, so if like fifteen, twenty minutes later, then you can get into the meeting. You've missed a lot.
Right.
So I'm not clear on the bargaining issue with Zoom. Our teacher, is the union saying that, um, they don't want teachers to show their face with their teaching? Or what, what is being, what, why is the bargaining?
In the spring of the year, they had concern with teachers being told they had to have their camera on.
Okay.
But I don't mind, we can, we can just tell them that's not, that's what the board wants.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm saying I'd like to see some guidelines brought back. I'm, I don't know if I'm, I can say right now, and that, there's a lot of discussion, I'm sure that can go on. But I, I mean, on its face, I think it's important for teachers to, you know, be live, and I think it's important for students to be live.
I guess I'm-
We're in the process of negotiating an MOU regarding online teaching and distance learning, so that's where that would go into.
Okay.
So that's what-
And now, if that seems to be the appropriate place of where that conversation would- But I, but I also think that, you know, it's a conversation that I'm interested in, and not that I even know today. But I'm saying, the superintendent, you all as a staff, administrators, they may have thoughts about this as well that, that we're not thinking about. Because that, you all are dealing with the operational side of, of that. And if there's, you know, something we need to think about when that MOU comes forward, or that's a discussion that may be-
I will tell you on the Zoom meetings that I participate in, fifty- I will tell you on the Zoom meetings that I participate in, fifty percent of the administrators don't have their camera on.
Do you, and is that, does that bother you? I mean, I'm, it, it's not something I think about, honestly, when I'm in a meeting, so I'm not sure.
It doesn't need help, I think that's.
But sometimes it's very simple, because the person is at home, they have a two-year-old running around, so they don't want the two-year-old on the camera, and, and that's why they're not there. It's not for any other big reason, just the small.
And just a couple of anecdotes. I had one presenter, and she feels distracted by seeing the faces when she's doing her presentation and teaching. So she will sometimes automatically mute everybody, so she can focus on, you know, the, what she's teaching and this, the chat feature that comes up. And then I had another story where they said, well, I muted it, and I told the teacher I had it muted because I didn't want to distract the other students. My cats were running around my head. So, you know, it's just situational.
And, yeah, and again, I'm not, one of the things I like to point out is that, is the mute feature for sound, I think, should be used, right? So I, I think when you talk about muting, you're also using the term for video mute, right?
Right, you can mute either video or audio.
Right, so, you know, obviously it's important to have microphones muted if they're not speaking. And there's a way to do that as a teacher, or the presenter has an option for that as well. Even when they come in, if they're all muted, or, you know, all those things. But I've been on some meetings too, where the person is blacked out, there's no face there, and they're asked a question, and we're all waiting, you know, and we're all waiting. Oh, I guess they're not with us anymore, you know. So that's, to me, is a little bit irri, a little bit irritating. At least if you can see their face, you know they're there, you know. Hey, unmute yourself, you know, you're muted, but, you know, I just, just for discussion's sake, just thought I'd bring that up.
Any other comments? Mrs. Count just came in, our chairman, so.
Yay!
We're glad you're here. We were worried, didn't we? You had a backswing or something. Just love those settings. We're right now on the term of legal matters.
Oh, no, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. So Kerry Spizer. Okay, good. Now, we.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you, uh, after we, you can just, come in, before, and before the workshop, take about five minutes, okay?
Hey, Juan. I just want to give you a little update on the FEA lawsuit that was going on. I'm sure y'all probably heard that yesterday, the, the Circuit Court Judge of Tallahassee ruled for the union and against the commissioner. Basically, in, in, in a nutshell, invalidating the requirements for opening brick and mortar, invalidating the requirements to submit a reopening plan, and allowing full funding for virtual and online. That was appealed last night at about five-thirty, which invokes an automatic stay, which means that it doesn't count for right now. What I would imagine will happen is that the FEA will go back to the circuit court, and they can file a motion to lift the automatic stay, and see if the judge will lift that automatic stay pending the, pending the appeal. So there's probably, there's some, probably some legal proceedings that are going to come forward, you know, out of this. And, you know, the arguments will continue, but just in case you didn't see it on the news or read it, read it in, in online or anything else, I just wanted to give you a little update, a little update on that.
Mr. Ratchell, the timeframe on that usually, I mean, because there was the automatic stay, then there was the appeal, or vice versa?
There was the, the, the court entered the order granting the temporary injunction at about one-third. At five-thirty, they filed a notice of appeal, because it's a governmental entity or a, or a government official, it invokes an automatic stay. And they can go back to the circuit court now and say irreparable harm continue if you keep the automatic stay in place, which has already ruled that irreparable harm is going on, which is the whole reason for the injunction. And so they go back in front of the same judge, he's probably going to lift the automatic stay. And then it'll go to the First Circuit Court of Appeals.
And the, you know, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but does that happen in a matter of days, do you think, in a situation like this?
I would imagine that it would happen relatively fast. I'd probably compare it to the Bush War stuff. You know, it's, it's probably not a nor, it's not a normal appeal, which you may, you know, give you forty days to follow your first brief, thirty days to respond, twenty days to respond, you know, and then they set it out for oral arguments at some point in time. I would imagine this, they would probably fast-track. And I have no idea, does fast-track mean two weeks or two months?
Is it, and again, you know you don't have a crystal ball, but is it probably headed to the state Supreme Court before it's all over?
Probably. Now, in Bush War, they, they jumped the circuit court, you know, which the Supreme Court just accepted jurisdiction over and took it. May happen, may not, that just depends on.
But just for, for clarity's sake, the judge's ruling was that the Commission of Education recertified the authority of the board, right? It's left up to individual boards to decide. So it's not that they're going to come out and say, we've got to close all public schools in Florida.
No.
Okay.
You're correct. They let, basically said that you can't, you cannot do by tie something to something you cannot do to do something that you couldn't do anyhow. So you can't condition it on funding. When you read the opinion, it talks about, you know, that the board said you have to open, you know, you know, five days a week, brick and mortar. If you don't, you have to submit a reopening plan. You know, part of the reopening plan says you guarantee that you will open five days, and if not, then you won't receive funding. It talks about the safe schools and, and the part about that, you know, there was ample testimony from the Department of Health officials that they could not give a recommendation that you do not need to open. Talked about the Miami, Miami-Dade, Broward, Palm Beach County, that they did not allow, they're allowing them to not open schools except for virtually, because they never left phase one. But there's nothing in the executive order that says if you're in phase one, then you can, you know, not reopen. So there's a bunch of, a bunch of, a bunch of things in there. The nutshell of it, though, Mr. Dogg, was that, you know, safe schools, the opening of schools has led to the locals.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And we've made our decision, and, you know, so, I mean, really, we're open, and
Correct.
the court decision in this case is not going to shut us down. It's going to be up to this war.
Correct, correct.
Is it going to boil down to the schools that didn't follow the reopening plan and opened five days? It's going to boil down to whether they're going to be compensated and paid, it's going to go down in money?
A lot of it is based on the funding issue.
Yeah.
Yes. And even though they said, you know, you know, sixty-four, five of the school districts went ahead and reopened, the judge made it clear that they had no choice.
Yeah.
You know, because you, you either opened, or you didn't open, and you lose your funding. So there really was not a choice that they had.
Right. So I don't, I don't know why they're still continuing it except for funding.
Uh, well, the Commission of Education is probably going to continue it because he feels he's right.
I understand exactly what you're saying, you know, the legislature.
Yes, so, so I just wanted to give you a little update on what was going on, and maybe some of the procedure that may come out of it, and that's all of that.
Yeah, in the, in the newspaper, on Monday's paper, it talked about a teenager, one of our past students, who was killed in an automobile accident in Crystal River. It was a Carson guy, and his son's syndicate, who's a Crystal River City Councilwoman, and we wanted to extend our condolences to the guy family. Very sad situation. Anyone else want to comment on that?
No, thank you for, for making sure we said that for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just, I wanted to thank everyone that helped support the National School Board Association's, Florida School Board Association's delegation that met here a couple of weeks ago. It was very successful. FSBA in Florida rocked. We, we ruffle a few feathers sometimes around the, the nation, but we are, are very much a dominant force, and we, we won some battles that we were hoping to. Again, a shout-out to Ms. Adele, Ms. Fran, Superintendent, and the TRC staff. You all were just rock stars. They made sure that we had all the connectivity. We even lost power briefly in, in the internet. And Ms. Androwski and Mr. Lance already had us covered, and so we, we were down only a few minutes before we were back up. And then I was able to participate in the Southern States School Board Association's annual meeting, and so I participated in that, representing the Florida School Board Association. So we had a successful meeting with that. I just really want to take one last moment. Our virtual teachers, I just have to thank you. Our, our teachers, we are so grateful for the opening. Let me start there. I was in the schools the morning that we opened up. I spent a good amount of time at one of our schools, and then I went to six other schools that day, and heard the same comment over and over, and was able to witness such positive displays from our students and our staff. I saw the coolest masks that you could ever imagine. And I am just kudos to the families who are really supportive of that and are, are buying into getting those cool masks for those kids. And so I was also so impressed, I was at La Canto Primary that day, and having an opportunity to see some of the rooms, the strategies that are being put in place, so that there is the minimal opportunity to, that if there's a way to have a student not have to wear a mask because they're in a safe situation and distancing, they're doing that as well as just trying to keep the general culture of our schools. So hats off to all those teams. But then I have to just, you know, lift up our virtual teachers, who are in a brand-new type of environment. And one of the things I have to say is, you know, social media can be an unfriendly place. Many of these teachers are taking time on their own to answer questions, to address parents' concerns, to write information late into the evening about this is why this is being done, or this is what struggles we're having, please work with us. They, they are not being asked to do that, and they are taking that initiative on their own to make sure that our students' needs are met. And I just want to thank them for doing that and for making that time. So that was all I really wanted to share with you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I'm going to go with that same line too, with the start of school and superintendent. I think everything I've seen has been remarkable. I talked, I talked to Sam last week and said, you know, for me, as a board member, I make myself pretty scarce the first week of school. It's, you know, I don't want principals and teachers to be worried about a school board member walking around. That's my personal view, but I told her this year, it's going to be a little different, because everything is so, so different, that, you know, I wanted to get a feel for what's going on. So I've too been in many of our schools in the last three days, and I've been able to see the mask-wearing. I've been able to see the special, the specials, the music and art, and checked on those, and the clinics, and seeing what we're doing there. All those things are, I think, right on. We got to mitigate the risk the best we can. And staff and our, our teachers are doing a fantastic job. You know, it, it's good to see some of this communication on social media. I know Mr. Kennedy just mentioned how it is pretty, pretty tough, but, you know, I talked to Melissa Baird over at Emerson Middle School, gave her some kudos, because, you know, some people had put some stuff on Facebook with some questions, and they were answered like within, within an hour, I mean, they had an answer. And, and Ms. Baird is a big part of that, and that, that, that communication with parents. And that's what we got to continue to focus on, is, you know, make sure that students and parents know what we're doing. And we're going to do everything in our power to, to make our schools safe and COVID-free. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm glad to be here today, and I'm glad our schools are doing such a good job. I'm not surprised. I knew they would. I know our teachers and our staff worked really, really hard to get this school system off to a good start this year. And I'm with them.
She got to speak in my phone.
My own line, yes.
This is overwhelming.
It's good to allow the air mic.
I think we've had one so long, right?
Trying to get to allow the air.
Oh, just want to say something. Mr. Kennedy, when he goes to a meeting, if the meeting is in person, if the meeting is a Zoom meeting, he is always so well-prepared, that he can answer whatever question is thrown at him, probably can cite Page and First too. And also, our other board members, when they get involved, we know when Ginger goes to Tallahassee, she's going to bring us back money. We know it, we count on it. Mrs. Count is al, always going to find out what's happening with the teachers and present it back to us and tell us what's happening, so we can deal with that. Mr. Dogg, he knows all the stuff about the sports and, and what they're going to do in the sports. I, I'm just so impressed, guys, with you all, because you're such talented people in so many different areas, and you can be counted on. That's so biggie, you know, it's, it's not a guess what you're going to do.
Kinda, I'm a little bit late this morning, huh?
Hey, you had us nervous. We thought, you know, that actress, road stuff, that, yeah. But that's what I wanted to say. I just thank you all, guys. It's, it's great to be a part of the team that you can count on.
Well, I'd like to dethrone almost every comment. Of course, I have a, a daughter teacher, and she's in the classroom and, and very happy, kids are happy. But the one staff member that hasn't been mentioned and we do need to bring it out is our custodians.
Here, here.
They are standing, playing. They're, they're in the rooms. I mean, in my daughter's room, the custodian's coming in, knowing she's got a planning period. He's just giving her another little cleanup during her planning period. And so I'm, and I'm going to go right back to the staff that worked all summer. I think y'all started in April, probably. Fifty people put this opening plan together, but the staff is the one that's implementing it, and the teachers, and yes, and it is working. It is working. And as long as we have the parents involved, keep their kids safe, mask them up, sanitize them up, take their temperature before you put them on a bus, don't put them in our schools if they're not feeling well. We're, we're going to accommodate, and that's why we did the campus thing. So just reiterate, you know, we don't want staff or students coming into schools if they're not feeling well. Just stay home, and we'll, we'll get through all of this. We've already had the one non-confirmed case that was ahead of us yesterday, so, and that was protocol. We've got a great working relationship with the Health Department here, and I think the article.
That's good, you do like it.
But the article was, the article was spot-on on how we're supposed to proceed. So I'm just, I think we're going to get through this. There'll probably be a couple more months of this fight. But, Mr. Bishop, your name is being passed around for all the sanitizing equipment and stuff like that. You're getting a lot of cadews, and they're probably not calling you, but, but you are.
Thank you very much.
Guys, guys.
Thank you.
And we're going to go through this. Flexible, compassionate, and what's the other word that we use? Grace.
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 We'll take, is there any other business coming for the board? And this special meeting is adjourned, and we will take a five-minute break or ten minutes?
Ten.
Ten minutes break, and we'll be convening for the workshop.
Are we doing an executive session before we?
Yeah.
Does she go and call that?
Yeah. Well, I'd have to.
He didn't.
The executive session coming up before the workshop.
I'm going to go, I see, that's okay, sure, I think if we do that, then.
I just wanted to know when I have to pack up.
Okay. Okay.